You know my wife, don't you?
I don't think so.
Oh, that's Robin.
Then yes, I do.
Huh?
Then yes, I do.
Okay.
I just didn't know she was your wife.
Who?
I just didn't know she was your wife.
Best to have her have a C and R.
I'd like to bring the meeting to order. Would you please, please rise and join for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Can we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Kelly.
Present.
Councilmember Miller.
Here.
Councilmember Perkins.
Here.
Councilmember Mendoza.
Here.
Councilmember Bess.
Here.
Vice Mayor Turner.
Here.
Mayor Croft.
Here.
The first item we have is recognition of Lon Turner for his year of service as Vice Mayor of Chino Valley. Mr. Turner, would you go on the up front? Would you bring me off the floor?
Yeah, okay.
I don't look at you that way.
It's with great honor that we get to, and my pleasure, to give you this recognition. So it's for Vice Mayor Lon Turner. We're asked, the town of Chino Valley is proud to recognize and express sincere appreciation to outgoing Vice Mayor Lon Turner for his service to the community as Vice Mayor of the town from December 2017 through today. Lon Turner was elected to serve as Chino Valley Town Councilmember in June 2011 and served in the capacity until December 2017 appointment as Vice Mayor of the town. Since being elected, Lon has served on or chaired several council subcommittees as well as being appointed as the town's alternate representative to the Upper Verde River Watershed Protection Coalition, Northern Arizona Municipal Water Users Association, and Governor's Groundwater Users Advisory Council. As councilmember and Vice Mayor and as a longtime resident of Chino Valley, Lon has brought knowledge and credibility that is instantly recognized by the citizenry and officials from the area. Over the years, Lon has demonstrated an unwavering commitment to the residents of the town of Chino Valley and has faced every challenge without a personal agenda, always considering the best for the community as a whole. On behalf of... On behalf of all the citizens of Chino Valley...
On behalf of all the citizens of Chino Valley, Arizona, I, Darrell Croft, Mayor of the town of Chino Valley, Arizona, do hereby express by this award deep gratitude and recognize Vice Mayor Turner's dedication and service to the town. We look forward to continuing to work with Lon through the fumative's term as councilmember and it has really been my great pleasure to work with you, Lon, for the last eight years or so.
Oh, I gotta say something now. Well, thank you very much. It has been my pleasure to serve as councilmember as well as Vice Mayor and I look forward to another four years of doing the same. I think that this council has done much for the community, stabilized and have us on a nice even uphill climb. So we're looking for, looking forward to continuing that. Thank you very much.
Item B is administer the oath of office to the Mayor-elect Darrell Croft, Councilman-elect Mike Bess, Joyce Kelly, Corey Mendoza, and Lon Turner. Could you all step up front with me and the town manager will administer the oath of office. Or swear.
I'm sorry.
So I'd like to do, as the deputy town clerk, I'm gonna administer the oath of office. We'll do it all together. So we'll read this together and then when it comes...
Trying to say your name.
Your name. Say your name.
All right, please put your right hands up. So the oath of office is... Please repeat after me. State of Arizona. County of Yavapai. Aye.
Darrell Croft, Lon Turner, Joyce Kelly.
Do solemnly swear...
Solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States...
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution and laws...
And the Constitution and laws.
Of the state of Arizona.
Of the state of Arizona.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same.
And defend them against all enemies.
And defend them against all enemies.
Foreign and domestic.
Foreign and domestic.
And that I will faithfully and impartially...
That I will faithfully and impartially.
Discharge the duties...
Discharge the duties.
Of the respective office... To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Thank you very much.
Me and Annie.
We're special.
Till next time.
Till next time.
And now we're gonna recess for a brief reception to welcome the reelected mayor and councilmembers. We have cake and coffee in the back, so...
You guys are getting your exercise.
We... Yes.
Got that already?
Ten minute recess.
We had some time.
Do we vote on that?
Welcome. Reelected councilmembers.
You can have your cake and eat it too.
Coffee. Coffee and something else.
Danger, we're gonna come out mixing and mangle.
The coffee's really good.
Okay, so I do need to sign.
I took the one with the most icing.
My last conversation with Brittany was...
Hello? Hi, Cam. That's correct. Sounds good. That's all right. We have plenty of cake around here this time of year.
Then we'll get your copy filed and you get that back.
No, but she has, she's not being cordial. She's got the message on there.
Second piece of cake. Did you get a piece? Uh-huh.
I think that boy was trying to...
Can I get you to sign that, sir? And I can make copies and everything original.
Can I take your plate, sir?
Oh.
We're gonna call the meeting back to order again, if we ever get a order again. Our next step is to nominate and select a Vice Mayor. I would like to nominate Jack Miller as Vice Mayor. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
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 Aye?
Aye.
Okay, care is unanimous.
Aye, aye.
Would I be opposed?
No. You don't count, Vice Mayor.
Too late now.
Do I have to sit next to him?
Yep.
Yep. Oh, my God.
Vice Mayor Miller.
Ooh, you sit really, wow.
Where's Jerry tonight? Is she...
Push what? See if I let my chair down and you can't see me.
Okay, let's move on to the agenda now we got that out of the way. We're gonna do introduction, presentations, and proclamation. First, item A is the annual report by Chino Valley Equestrian Association regarding the status of the Chino Valley Equestrian Park located on town property. Danielle and Ruth? How are things going with their question center?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. It's a pleasure to be back again here in front of you this year for... To bring you up to speed to what we've been doing over the past year at the Equestrian Center out at Old Home Manor. Last year, we talked to you about a couple of clinics that we had. We had three last year. Our goal was one. We had the same goal for this year. We managed to get five underway. We did four with the Back Country Horsemen. So they brought people in to work on obstacles and things that they would see out in the back country, rocks, boulders, big trees, things like that. So they had four separate clinics. Anyone was invited, anybody that wanted to come was invited. And then the Granite Mountain Riders held a clinic on getting your horse in a trailer. If you've ever tried that, you know that sometimes it can be a little tricky. So that was also very well attended and we look forward to doing more clinics this upcoming year with both groups. Our goal was to have three horse-related events this year. We actually ended up with quite a few more. We had three horse shows, which were very well attended. We were very happy with the turnout. We had quite the local support. We had several of the local trainers from Chino Valley, from Williamson Valley, from Prescott Valley come. So we were very pleased to see that. We had a fundraiser for one of the horse rescues here in town and then we also did another show for the CVEA to raise money. We also held nine barrel races. And we've picked up a new board member this year, Helen Fuller, who is, has a real strong background in barrel racing in Montana and Wyoming for ages. So we're thrilled to have her aboard because it's a little tough for those of us who are hunter jumper people to run a barrel race. But we did have great participation in that as well. Next. As you can see, we broaden our, the basis of our horse shows. We now have driving classes. This is a carriage driving class. We also had an obstacle class. We've got a nice group of English riders coming to support the facility and the effort that we're raising money to continue to improve the grounds. So we have a thing called open riding on Thursdays and Saturdays and this has proven to be one of our most popular events. It's funny, the horse show entries, one of the largest division that we have right now is the over fifty crowd. And so they come out during the week and on Saturdays when we're not having a show and practice, they get a chance to use our trail course, do barrel racing, pole bending, and whatever else they feel like doing. So it's been an outstanding event. In order to participate, you have to be a member. So it's helped bumped up our membership as well. We've been working on improvements in equipment again. This year, we've installed permanent speakers, a permanent flagpole, more dirt, and worked a lot on footing. We've completely redecked a trailer that was donated to us and then we actually found a great deal on a TR3 arena conditioner. So we picked that up and it has done an excellent job of helping keeping our footing in good condition. Membership and volunteers, our goal is usually fifty a year. This year, we've got a little over a hundred and forty, closer to a hundred and fifty. We have four new board members this year as well. We've had a few new members join. The council, or the council of the board. We have a young man, well, youngish, who is a bronc rider, who has picked up doing marketing and promotions. We have another young man that's involved in team roping. So we're hoping to get that revived again out there. And again, we have Helen, who is just gangbusters at fundraising and getting things going and promoting the gym con events for kids and adults. This year, we raised about $11,000 in donations and contributions from the community, from local businesses. So we're very thankful for that, to have their continuing support. We couldn't make this happen without their help. Our social media effort has been going very well. We get 2,500 landings per month. We've upped the number of Facebook followers to 726. So that's up about 50 percent. We'll get 500 views on our Facebook page around events for several days leading up to and afterwards. Everybody wants to make sure they know what's going on and then they all want to see the pictures afterwards. So we have very good luck promoting events and so forth through Facebook. This is really one of the reasons we do all of this, just so, you know, kids and families here have a fun thing to do. They can get out on their horses. There's so many things that you can do there and so many things that we encourage kids to do that we really want to make sure that they have an opportunity to continue to grow up with horses when so many communities are losing the open space and the ability to own them.
Santa and Mrs. Claus for flying in on the helicopter and visiting us. If you were over there and you saw the line of children across memory park that sit on Santa's lap, God bless Santa Claus and Mrs. Claus. Native air helicopter, they deliver, they've been delivering Santa every year. We want to thank them for doing that. Chino Valley Chamber of Commerce, they helped us. We were partners with them and they did a lot of work. Thank you, Chino Valley Chamber of Commerce. Christmas trees and the displays, people put up Christmas trees, we had displays, we had vendors. If you were over there, we had crafter booths. Hot chocolate and coffee was really a lot of fun. And we had food trucks also. Cindy Thomas, where are you? Is she here tonight?
No.
Cindy Thomas and all her team members set up lights, banners on State Route eighty-nine, decorations for the horses, lock, stock, and barrel, hay bales, presents, and many other things that made this successful. To the chamber that helped us and to Cindy and her crew and everybody, all the employees of the town that helped in this. They really turned out to be a nice affair. Thank you very much. Anybody else have anything? Have I said enough?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Yes, sir.
Evidently not.
Evidently not, okay.
Well, I'm going back to my fiftieth birthday party. There's surveys out. There's some at the library.
His fiftieth, yeah.
That was like forty years ago.
Yeah, I know. All right. Well, the town's fiftieth birthday party. I went over and picked up about fifty surveys from the elementary school, Del Rio. And I'd like to be able to read some of these kids' responses to you. But for time purposes, I won't. But we will get some of these posted and when we have a shorter meeting, I'll read some of them. But I'll tell you right now, you want to laugh, you gotta listen to a four-year-old answer some of these questions. I encourage all of you to go ahead and swing by the library or the town, pick up a survey and return it. Because I know you're all gonna be here fifty years now when we open up that time capsule.
Hmm, yeah.
Thank you, Councilmember Best. Um, I wanted to echo Mayor Croft's sentiments, expressing my gratitude to the town staff, Cecilia, everyone that put in, everybody that makes us look good. I mean, really, they do most of the work. And it was an excellent, excellent Christmas tree lighting event. And a lot of the citizens in the community are grateful for the decorations at Lock, Stock, and Barrel and the flags down the highway. It feels more like home for Christmas for people and I just wanted to say thank you, not only for that, but for really all your hard work all year long.
This is the first year we've done that, so hopefully you'll appreciate it as a citizen that we're trying to do some Christmas things. And thanks to all our staff for everything that's been done this year.
And now everybody knows why there were hay bales on the south end of town on Welcome to Chino.
We've got a lot of questions, didn't we?
I got asked a lot.
Yeah. Anyone else? Town manager, your turn.
Well, I too want to echo thank yous to both our town staff and the chamber for all the, for December to remember. As being our first one, I think it was a big success. Secondly, I wanted to mention that, as you know, we had submitted through Simpo for a build grant to build out Highway eighty-nine to the north to be similar to what's on the south end of town. We did hear today from Simpo, unfortunately, that the build grant was not successful. It was not approved. However, a giant congratulations to Yavapai County for receiving a grant for the middle Verde to SR two-sixty project over in the Verde Valley. That was the only build grant awarded in the entire state of Arizona.
Wow, that's good.
So just kind of FYI.
Anything else? Okay, let's go on to consent agenda. All these items listed below are considered to be routine and may be enacted by one motion. Any council member may request to remove an item from the consent agenda to be considered and discussed separately. Do you have anything you want to remove on this side? This side? Town clerk, would you read the consent agenda, please?
Six A, consideration and possible action to approve expenditure of forty-eight thousand dollars Governor's Office of Highway Safety Grant funds to purchase an unmarked aggressive driving vehicle for use in traffic details. Also requests authorization for expenditure of no more than ten thousand from the general fund which was budgeted in this year's fiscal budget. Six B, consideration and possible action to continue receiving interim consultant services for the Development Services Director position through interim public management, IPM. C, consideration and possible action to update the appointment of council members and staff to various regional and state entity committees. D, consideration and possible action to update the council subcommittee roster. E, consideration and possible action to adopt the two thousand nineteen base council meeting schedule. F, consideration and possible action to accept the November thirteen, two thousand eight regular meeting minutes.
Do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion. We accept consent agenda item six A, B, C, D, E, and F.
Does it have a second?
Second.
I have a motion as second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay. Motion carries. Let's go on to action items. The council may vote to recess the public meeting and hold an executive session on any item on this agenda pursuant to ARS thirty-eight, four thirty-one, oh three, eight, three for the purpose of discussion or consultation for legal advice with the town attorney. Executive sessions are not open to the public and no action may be taken in executive sessions. Let's go to item A. Now we're gonna do the fun stuff. Presentation of the Mayor's Recognition Award recognizing Darlene J. Wescott, Librarian Extraordinaire for twenty-three years of dedicated service to the Chino Valley's children and families and for consideration of possible action to adopt resolution number eighteen, one-one-three-two naming certain town facilities as the Darlene J. Wescott Children's Library. Darlene, would you join? Would you join this up front?
This is fun stuff.
Love those balloons.
Hey, can I see everybody that's here for Darlene? Show a hand.
Scott, microphone. They can't hear you at home. They're over there.
Ah, come on.
Beside the point.
Hi, how are you?
We've been talking about this.
All right, let me read this award to you. Mayor's Recognition Award presented to Darlene J. Wescott, Children's Librarian Extraordinaire.
Yeah.
Yeah. Darlene J. Wescott, the town of Chino Valley, first children's librarian affectionately known throughout the community as Miss Darlene, has served in that capacity from nineteen ninety-five to twenty-eighteen and has also served as assistant librarian and library manager. Miss Darlene has given generously of her time and talents in establishing a child's library program as well as developing genuine caring relationships that have impacted many Chino Valley children and families. Miss Darlene prepares and presents over one hundred eighty programs annually with an average of sixty-five hundred children and, six thousand five hundred children in attendance for a total of four thousand one hundred and forty programs and one hundred forty-nine thousand five hundred attendees in her twenty-three years of service. So she's done it for twenty-three. And Miss Darlene has been officially recognized for her contribution in the following way. Receiving the Achievement of Civic Excellence Silver Award in two thousand one, being named Grand Marshal of the First Territorial Capital Base Parade in two thousand five.
Grand Marshal, huh?
Being inducted into the Heritage Middle School Hall of Fame in two thousand eight and receiving the Arizona Youth Services Librarian of the Year Award in two thousand ten. That's cool. On behalf, on behalf of the Chino Valley Town Council and all the citizens of the town of Chino Valley, I, Darryl Croft, Mayor of the town of Chino Valley, do hereby recognize with gratitude for Darlene J. Wescott, Librarian Extraordinaire for twenty-three years of dedicated service to the Chino Valley children and families. In witness thereof, I hereby set my hand and cause the seal of the town of Chino Valley to be affixed this day, eleventh day of December.
I want to thank everybody for being here.
I want to thank everybody. You know, it's been an honor to, to serve you for twenty-three years. Good leadership. I've met a good partner and I appreciate Scott very much. And thank you for coming to my programs and even the entertainers who are tonight that I just dearly love. So thank you very much. Thank you guys for everything and I'll still be in the community, so I'll see you around, okay? Thank you. The twenty-seventh of, of this month is my last day, but Scott is putting on a big wonderful party for me, so come and have one last party with me from eleven to one on the twenty-seventh. Sorry, Scott, I put that away.
Actually. We're not done. We're not done. Come on over here. We all know we can't replace Darlene. We know that. But what we can do is we can retain her name. And we are going to do that right here. Come on over here. And I need you to take.
Maybe.
He's got the Jake in there.
There you go.
Wonderful.
Congratulations.
We're gonna take another ten minutes to allow everybody to congratulate Darlene.
Remember, here is her retirement party on December twenty-seventh at the library from eleven to one. It will be a catered event. Come on in and say goodbye.
See you later.
Nobody probably complain or say anything.
Hey, Ma'am. Boy's looking so sharp.
Tonight's gonna, not gonna be a record breaker night.
I'm hoping. No. That's true. Yeah, push it on too because it's terrible if you don't.
One guy told me, he said, he said, people told him not to, he said, I have both my mind out at the same time. And he said, I'm really glad I did. I said, really?
Because he didn't go back and get his.
He said, I was so nervous. He said, if I'd only done one, I'd have never done the other.
Hey, I'm good. Mayor, we never did do a motion on that. This motion for remoting.
Yeah, maybe out around to the left. Coffee's pretty good, like you said.
But they've also, they've come a long way to do it. They used to cut you off. Now they don't cut. So supposedly it works a lot better. And then it gets stiff and heavy. So you don't push it. Then it gets worse and worse. You see, you got those straight things sticking out. So hopefully it works.
All my, the rest of my family's getting pissed as well. My kid is rotating. Wesley has bad surgery with his lower back. Scott, they went through here.
It's supposed to be a minute. Scott and Tim, it's supposed to be a minute.
He's doing deep. Just he's easing back into it. Oh, yeah, not jack, I see. I see what you're talking about. They're, they're bringing us out. Yeah.
I'd have to find that we're collecting.
Hey, wake up, baby.
I'm waiting. I'm just like.
I'd like to call the meeting to order again.
Thank you, Darlene.
Hello, Andrew. How are you this evening?
Blended, Mayor. How about you?
You're doing great. Thank you. Okay, let's go on to item B. Consideration, possible action to adopt ordinance eighteen, eight-five-two, rezoning seven point oh.
Excuse me, Mayor.
What?
Don't we still have to vote on the resolution?
Okay, let's go back. We need to vote on the recommended action on item A. Do I have a motion?
I make a motion. We adopt resolution number eighteen dash one-one-three-two naming certain town facilities as a Darlene J. Wescott Children's Library.
Second. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay. Thank you. Okay, let's, let's go on to B. Consideration, possible action to adopt ordinance eighteen, eight-five-two rezoning point, seven point oh six acres of real property from AR agricultural residential, five acre minimum zoning district, SR two, single-family residential two acre minimum zoning district. The property, assessor partial number three oh two, twenty-one, nineteen, is generally located approximately nine hundred feet east of Sycamore Vista Drive and six hundred thirty-eight feet north of West Center Street. Mr. Lerma.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, Council, before you have an item from Mr. Gimpie. He's requesting to rezone his property from the current zoning district, AR five, to the proposed zoning district, SR one, single-family residential, one acre minimum. As you can see here on the visual, the site is not, is not abutting a public street, but is about six hundred thirty-eight feet north of Center Street Road, which is accessed through an easement. As you can see here, the property, the subject property is abutting subdivision known as Mesa View South. We have Chino Valley Estates further down south and Molly Ray Estates to the west. Property is approximately seven acres. Stated before, it's under the agriculture residential five acre minimum. Has a general plan use designation of medium density residential, two acres or less. The surrounding zonings around the property is SR one to the east, to the north, SR one as well. And we have various level spots of the AR five zoning district. Um, the part, the, the applicant had a neighborhood meeting, August twentieth. Said meeting, there were thirteen attendees. Uh, most of these attendees were from Mesa View South. A lot of them voiced their opinions on the disapproval of the Gimpies' request zone change. At that point, Planning and Zoning Commission received three letters voicing the same opinions of disapproval on said property. The item went before the Planning and Zoning Commission for the first time on September fourth. During that meeting, commission had several questions. Uh, one of them has to do with this, this visual that we have up here. The Gimpies are, if they get the, the zoning that they're requesting, they, uh, they want to pursue forward to subdivide the property. They would do that by extending the easement that they have now, the twenty-five foot easement, to a fifty foot easement. Now, let me explain this about the twenty-five foot easement. At the time that this property right here at one, at one point was one property. About two thousand six or during that time, this property was, was subdivided, not by the Gimpies, but the previous property owners. At that point, the UDO required legal access for properties that were being subdivided to have a twenty-five foot easement in nature. At one point, um, the UDO amended that for fifty feet. And that's why we see this as a bottleneck, twenty-five with a fifty foot extension because as of right now, the UDO requires a fifty foot easement. So, um, commission wanted to know, they, they had several questions that at that point couldn't be answered by staff. So the commission decided to continue the item to the next scheduled PNZ zoning meeting. Basically, two of the questions that they had were, can the twenty-five foot easement that's currently there be further expanded and width? And if the commission could suggest another zoning district than, than was previously proposed by, by the applicant. At that time, the applicant was requesting the SR one zoning district. They wanted to know if they could request something that fit a little bit more in that area. Talking to legal counsel, the answers that they gave us to these answers were that because the property that has a twenty-five foot easement is not the one that's in question or is the one, the one that has, is being requested for the zone change that we can't ask the applicant to further extend the easement. Second of all, uh, staff can suggest a different zoning district than what, that was originally proposed, but ultimately it will be the applicant's decision to make. At that point, staff sat down with the applicant, spoke to them about if they decided to continue forward with the SR one zoning district or propose something different. They decided to go forward and amend their application and requested the SR two zoning district. In that case, they said, they stated that that would give the, the, the property owners adjacent, uh, West Meadow subdivision the assurance that the property, the subject property would only result in three lots and not seven lots as, uh, the, the residents to the, to the west were thinking that was gonna end up being at one point or another. Planning and Zoning Commission forward a recommendation approval for the applicant's request of the SR two zoning district. At that point, the item went before the town council. I believe town council also received the same letters that the Planning and Zoning Commission received from the property owners, again stating the same, um, issues that had to do with, uh, design review of the site, that had to do with, uh, issues with the easement and that had to do with manufactured homes, which were the three main points. Uh, the item was continued to, today. During that time, during November, November, it gave our staff plenty of time to work with both applicants and the adjacent neighbors. Staff went out to site and visited the Gimpie property, the Gimpie prop, the, sorry, the Gimpie showed us where exactly the easement was gonna be extended and the, uh, staff did a site analysis to see if that would work. We also met with, uh, some of the property owners. I believe there was about eight property owners. And again, we spoke to them and heard their concerns again. As far as staff and their analysis, staff believes that there are, the zoning that the applicant is requesting, the SR two zoning district, is in conformance with the general plan. The general plan has this site as medium density residential, one acre minimum. The SR two zoning district was served as a transitional zoning between the AR five and the SR one zoning district is what we believe. So at, during Planning and Zoning Commission, again, staff voted five to one on to, for the recommendation of approval to town council. And staff is in support of that and is also requesting, uh, the council approve ordinance eighteen dash eight-five-two to rezone seven acres of real property from AR five to the SR two zoning district. The applicant is here. If any council have questions for them or for myself.
Okay, let's go to this side. Yes.
Counsel, or Vice Mayor Miller was smiling, so he has something to say. Or you just know I have a big mouth. I have something to say. Um, I would like to, um, address the applicants, please.
I have one question before Alex leaves, real quick.
Okay. See, I knew it. I knew.
Um, you, you mentioned that there was eight, uh, neighbors there that.
At the, at the neighborhood meeting, there was.
No, at the site.
At the site.
And I'm, I'm sorry, I just didn't hear you, but you said that.
We met with the, we met with the neighbors. We gave them an open invitation to come back after council continued the item. During the, the month of November, we gave them an open invitation to come and speak to staff. We did that at Development Services building. We met with the applicant on site.
Yes. And, and then didn't you say that you met with the neighbors when you was doing the site walk?
No, only strictly with the applicant.
I'm sorry, but I thought you said the, the neighbors' concerns, and I didn't hear if you said they were met or not met.
I said that we, that we heard the app, the, the neighbors' concerns when we invited them back for the neighborhood meeting.
Okay, I apologize. I just didn't hear you.
No problem.
I'm done now.
Okay.
Well, that brings me to, um, I, I understood you said that the concerns were that there were originally gonna be seven lots and it brought in, um, the possibility of manufactured homes.
Let me, let me clarify that. I, I think that, that was misunderstood what I said. Um, the applicant always had the intention of subdividing the property into three lots. The neighbors were worried that eventually it might become seven lots. That was never the applicant's intent.
Okay. Um, the surrounding properties, um, I can't see to scale. Are they, their zone, single-family residential, one acre? But are they one acre or are they two acres?
One acre.
Okay, so the applicant is, um, requesting two acre minimum. Does that satisfy the surrounding residents that are on one acres?
I think that's a question that they can answer.
I would like to speak with them, please.
Okay.
Who are we talking to now? We talking to the, before we go off here, we need, I want to control this a little bit. Okay? Where are we? We're, we're gonna talk to the applicant? Are we talking to? Who, who, who's the applicant? Who's the owner of the property? Would you please come up? You're the applicant. And if she has questions, thank you.
Hi.
Hi.
Hi. I understand this has been a long process. I just have a couple of questions. When you changed, um, the your zoning request to a single-family residential, two acre minimum, did that satisfy the concerns of the neighboring properties?
I don't understand your, your question.
Okay, um, did you have another neighborhood meeting after changing the zoning request?
We, we met with the neighbors again, it wasn't necessarily something that we advertised for, but we give them, we give them an open invitation. I think I can answer that from, from the, the feedback that we.
Please come up to the microphone, so we can, we can record it.
From the feedback that we got from the neighborhood meeting and when we met with them again. I'm, I don't believe the zoning was ever an issue. I mean, the issue had to do with again, with, with the easement and where it was located. And it had to do with manufactured homes and it had to do with the risk of this property being subdivided into seven lots with seven manufactured homes.
Is the plan for this project to be manufactured homes? I mean, is that the basis of the neighboring properties' concerns?
Yes, it is.
Okay.
Manufactured home is one of the biggest issues that they brought up. As far as issues, i- if the applicant is gonna put manufactured homes there, from the discussions that we had, is, is, yes.
Okay, and I saw on the slide that it was, um, passed five to two, forwarded to council, five to two. Do you know the reasons that the two, um, Planning and Zoning Commissioners voted against it?
I do not, I, I, I don't believe that the chair gave them the, the time to, to respond to why. It was, it was simply put to a vote and it was four to two. Uh, five to two, sorry about that.
Okay.
Okay, thank you, I'm good, I'm done.
Cory?
Uh, I'd, I'd like to, is this open for public?
We, we are not doing public tonight, no. You ask, if you, you have a question, then ask the question. What, what is your concern? We need to resolve your concern.
Oh, no, it's just, I, I didn't know whether you were gonna hear both, both sides of this meeting.
Unless you vote to have public comments, I won't open it to public comments. As a group, do you want to have public comments or? No, okay, generally, we're not gonna have public comments.
Then with, with the information that I'm hearing, I, I've got to go with what the general plan is. The general plan is something that's voted by the community. Uh, everyone has a, a say so in that. And so therefore, if this meets the general plan guidelines, then, uh, I, I don't see how I can say no. I think would even be, put the town in jeopardy if I did, so, that's my statement.
Thank you, yes, sir. Uh, the only question I have is tomorrow, and it seems like whichever council you talk to, it's always, we pick up somebody else's mistakes. And I don't know, and, and we can't do anything, I was told by the lawyer. But that twenty-five foot easement, that's gonna cause problems down the road. It will cause problems for anybody that's trying to buy a property or buy your property from you or rent it, whatever you end up doing. Try to get in and out with a trailer or anything. So, uh, you're gonna make money on that property, I believe. I don't think you're doing, you're, you're doing it for free.
Easy, easy what you say, Mike, be careful.
I'm sorry, uh, I assume that there would be some kind of their monetary value made someplace. And, uh, I just find it very difficult.
We're, we're here to look at the zoning, not prob, what profit the homeowner's gonna make.
Looking for property.
We're looking at zoning question, that's what we're looking at tonight.
All right.
Okay, this side, Cory.
I have a few concerns. Uh, first off would be the water, would be the individual, the person, whoever's going to. End up ultimately would be responsible for.
We're not in water, we're in zoning tonight. We're talking about whether we're gonna rezone it.
Yeah, concerns about, well, first off, the water, how many can get a well? Two, access to the property, the twenty-five feet. Three, the septic saturation. And four, the runoff concerns me at the elevation and looking around the neighborhood, that's my concerns.
Anyone else?
Yeah.
Yeah.
All of these things that have been brought up are good concerns to look at. There are things that all of us have to worry about when we purchase property and, and there's gonna be neighbors. But what, the, the bottom line is right now. The way I see it is this is legal to split this property. It's legal for the owner to put mobile homes on if they choose. It's all the zone, the zoning and codes are all correct. And they do own the property, so they, they have property rights also.
So our question tonight is, do we want to approve rezoning from, uh, five acre minimum to SR two, single family? Is there a motion?
Uh, make a motion to approve the, to adopt ordinance eighteen eight five two rezoning seven point zero six acres of real property from AR five agricultural, agricultural residential five acre minimum zoning district. To SR two, single family residential two acre minimum zoning district.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay.
Nay.
We have two nays and five, four. Motion carries, let's go on to the next item.
I'm sorry, besides Chloe, who was the other nay?
I was.
I'm sorry.
Mike Best.
Mike Best, Councilman Best, the Councilman. Okay, let's go on to item C. Councilman Mendoza?
Uh, I need to make a request to reschedule item seven B.
I have a motion to, uh, move item C to the first meeting in January, to move it forward.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay, motion carries. Let's go on to item D, consideration.
Can we just a minute, let this noise clear? Okay, sir, thank you.
Okay. That didn't get out of control, huh? Okay, let's go on to item D, consideration of possible action to approve and authorize. Mayor Croft has signed a fourth amendment to lease agreement and the memorandum of fourth agreement to lease agreement with Sun. Sun State Towers three, I, 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 L, LLC. Both related to a revised legal description, access easement into utility easements for wireless communications tower at Town Hall. Excuse me, Mr. Marbury, are we gonna do something with the statue out there?
Uh, hope so, Mayor.
Hope so.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. This item is, uh, an amendment to the, to the Sun State lease for the, for the tower right outside. Um, it's, it's, I think, uh, in my opinion, as town engineer, it benefits both the town and the, the leasing. What we've got in, to make it in general terms is this, uh, cyan or light blue color is the old electrical easements. It kind of cut through the middle of the property. And the, the dark blue or whatever color line that is on the bottom. Is the, the new easement that follows more of the property line and comes up the curb line. And also the, the ingress easement, this is an old map, but we actually worked with the leasing and realigned this. A little bit from even this drawing to line up with the gates. So that they have a described legal access to the gates of that, that fence out there. Um, so it's just really redrawing some of the easement lines of how they run power into the property. And I think it'll free up the property for the town use in the future if they use it. So that's in a nutshell what the lease amendment is, is just redrawing some lines.
Questions on this side? Questions on this side?
Nope.
Do I have a motion?
Uh, make a motion to approve and authorize Mayor Croft to sign the fourth amendment to the lease agreement. And the memo, memorandum of the fourth amendment to lease agreement with Sun State Towers, the three LLC.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay, motion carries.
Thank you.
Presentation regarding staff performing community dialogue regarding the proposed road maintenance program and its possible funding by a property tax. As well as communicating the proposed ballot measure to, to buy water companies. Staffing, staff will be offering feedback to the council about the community dialogue sessions and preparation for council. January eighth, twenty nineteen council meeting, where it is anticipated the council will call for an election.
Thank you, Mayor.
It is great.
I'm gonna go over this PowerPoint, um, and just kind of briefly give you a little bit of history for the public on what we've done to date. And then, uh, uh, we'll look for a recommendation in January for a call to, for election. I keep wanting to say call to public, but, um, anyway, let's go through, uh, slide one, if you don't mind. Trying to get it up, get it going. Why is it, oh, no. So I want, first off, I'd like to thank staff and council members who have spent time going out and speaking with the public. We kind of called it the Frank and Joe Show, so Frank Marbury, Joe Duffy, um, Jamie Lewis, John Coomer. Um, have been all involved in putting some of the materials together and, and doing the communication with the public. So as we've communicated, uh, the mayor and I have gone out over the last couple of years in doing community outreach. And in doing so, uh, a consistent thing that kept coming up was, can you go to the first slide, please? One of the things that kept coming up were, um, the roads. I mean, we had additional items, drainage, trash. Uh, those can be addressed with, uh, staff members or even with some code changes. Um, but our roads and streets, as you know, are a bigger issue and one that we just can't handle by ourselves, um, and through our current budget. So from there, um, uh, we had tasked staff to, um, bring the issue up with, uh, the Roads and Streets Committee, which they did. And they all started working on a solution for some kind of a road maintenance program. And, uh, through that, then the, the Roads and Streets Committee did make a recommendation, um, to forward it to council. And from there, again, we, um, council had tasked staff to go out to the public and start getting some feedback from the public on, uh, what that might look like. And so we've kind of honed our message in over time. And, um, ultimately, um, I think what we're gonna recommend to council is, uh, the same thing that the Roads and Streets Committee did recommend as well. I'm not gonna read you everything on here, and I'm looking at the public out here. Most of these people have been at one of our public meetings, some people who are out here in the, um, public. But right now, uh, we're looking at a one point six million dollars, um, for the, um. To bring the roads up to a condition that we said would be, um, something acceptable by the Roads and Streets Committee. And, um, you know, we looked at different ways of funding it through sales tax, bonding, property tax, et cetera. Can you go to the next slide? Um, we have gone out and talked to, uh, twenty-one different meetings that we've had with the public. We've met with over two hundred community members. Most of those had to do with homeowners associations, um, different community organizations, the Chino Valley Chamber. Couple meeting, uh, several meetings with staff members. Uh, most of our staff members actually live in town, but they get asked a lot of questions. And we've continued to kind of develop what the message is so that it was clear. There were, we got a lot of good feedback from people on how, um, things, if it was a little confusing, if it wasn't. They had concerns about things, et cetera. So as you can see, we've been out quite a bit, in fact, we probably spent at least twenty-five percent of our time in meetings and preparation for different things. So, next slide, please. For the most part, I think the concerns were, um, summarized in these seven items. And it basically, uh, lack of trust of government, which I think is universal throughout the United States. Um, and some of the concerns I had there just had to do, are you really gonna do what you say you're gonna do? And how do we guarantee that you get it done? Some people just said they couldn't afford an additional tax. Uh, I think there was a little bit of confusion on what roads are maintained by the town and what are not. There's, um, some people who don't know that they live on private streets or what, if I have a dirt street, how does that work? So we've tried to hone that message down as well. Not a whole lot, but some people did think twenty years was too long, they would like the opportunity to vote on that sooner. And, um, a little concern about when is my road gonna get done? I'd say those were, those were the majority of the questions that we had. Feedback was very positive though on both sides. I felt like it was a good dialogue as far, and I think the mayor can speak to that as well, he was, I got almost every one of them. Okay, and go to the next slide.
It was fun.
Fun, okay. So considering all the feedback and the options that we shared with the public, this is what we're gonna be, this is what we are recommending. And then the council in, uh, January will do a call for election, so you can discuss it. We'll have both options there ready for you and you can choose which one you choose, because we did the one and a half and the two percent. So, um, we're recommending that a special election be called for May twenty-first, two thousand and nineteen. For the purpose of asking voters to approve a property tax for the sole purpose of the town's road maintenance and construction. And that would be at the January eighth meeting. And that we would, we're recommending the levy be set at one point five million. And that the tax would be approved for twenty years, allowing for three complete cycles of maintenance. And, um, if approved, all, the town maintains all levied monies in a restricted account with controls to ensure it is only used for road maintenance and construction. And lastly, I just wanted to reiterate that that was a recommendation of the Roads and Streets Committee. And we're, we endorse that as well. Yes, Cory has a question, I can just tell.
Can you back up one slide there? The levy would be set at one point five million, are we no longer going for a percentage? Or are we going for a levy cap?
We're going for levy, and I think, uh, our finance director, Joe Duffy, you want to explain how that works?
Would you come up, please?
That came up quite a bit, um, Councilmember Mendoza, so let him, it's actually, um, a nice way that he can explain this.
Matt put me on the spot. So actually, that's what we have to do is levy. And when we went to Roads and Streets Committee, we basically divided it out down to the percentage based on the assessed value. But the voters have to approve the initial levy amount. So that's why we rounded it, the, the original property tax, the amounts that we calculated with the Roads and Street Committee, came out to the one point two or the one point five million. So it's, we, we're gonna levy, we have to levy a fixed amount. We tell the county, this is how much that we're gonna levy the community and then they distribute it.
This, this doesn't, this then doesn't compensate for inflation then? Where your property tax, if we did do a percentage.
Yeah, it does, we do not have a, we actually don't have an option to levy a percentage of a property tax. We only have an option to levy the fixed amount.
But explain how we expect to handle inflation.
Yeah, so the same thing will happen, is every year we'll levy the one point five, but we're allowed to put in, as new homes are built. We're allowed to put in their assessed value and increase the levy for the amount of new construction that's added in every year. Council, by state law, can increase that levy up to two percent a year. So you can increase that one point five up to two percent. But we're, when we're talking with the taxpayers out there and we're presenting this, we're saying we're gonna keep our levy the same at one point five. But the new construction will come in, so we get fifty new homes, we'll probably levy one million five hundred and thirty thousand, let's say, each year. So we will get that steady growth that we talked about.
And council can reduce that if it looks like.
And council has, if we get additional funding, council has the option to reduce it. So when we did this math, this is one point nine seven percent, and then the option eight was one point five seven percent.
So this is the larger of the two options.
It is. This will give us that extra three hundred thousand dollars that the Roads and Street Committee wanted to put away each year for bigger projects.
Correct.
Yes.
Okay.
So, just, just to make sure I'm getting what you were talking about. So the reason percentage even came up at all was to decide, what percentage we wanted, I mean, we wanted to go for. We wanted to put out there, but it ultimately ends up being an amount.
Right, it all, on the ballot measure, it ends up being a fixed amount that we have to do. So we just rounded to the nearest hundred thousand.
Then the county comes back and says ten percent residential, eighteen percent commercial.
Yeah, they distribute it.
On the assessed value.
Based on the assessed value at the time, right.
So then, let me see if I got that straight. That the one point five to two percent we've now concluded should be a dollar amount. That is more or less adjustable by inflation and growth, up or down as needed. Is that, am I correct in understanding that?
Yeah, we took the original percentages that we talked to the Roads and Street Committee and just rounded them to the nearest hundred thousand dollars. Because on the ballot measure and what we tell the county is we're gonna levy so many dollars over our entire community. Now, the only thing that we have, we, we have two, council have two options every year. One, they can increase that levy by two percent every year if they so choose. Because they can, you can increase your base levy no more than two percent a year. Except for the new. Except for the new construction that comes in. So the new homes get added, and so your levy will go up with just the new homes coming in. So we're hoping that that will keep up with inflation. Plus, our, her funds go up 2% or 3% a year. So we're hoping the combination of those will give us enough money to keep up with inflation and keep doing the same amount of work.
My questions are for Cecilia.
Corey, there.
One, when is my road getting done? Kind of a joke.
Is it dirt?
Kind of. It's, it's kind of dirt, if anybody's driven on it. No, there are some rocks, yeah. Right. There's some tumbleweeds. Anyways, moving on. Is there printed literature?
Yes.
Available for the community?
Yes, we have lots of.
And where would we find that?
You can, I will put some out in the council room so that you guys have access to it.
If I could have like 50, uh huh?
I would just like to comment, Joe, that I liked your presentation without the slides. Very good job.
Tomorrow evening at 5:30, we're doing that full presentation at the library conference room. So if you'd like to see the full presentation and you haven't, you can come over to the meeting. It's free, and we'll have staff there. And we'll go through the presentation and explain in depth what we're looking at and why we've decided to go this way to try to fix our roads.
I've got one more, please, Joe. Then where does, where does commercial property come in versus residential in, in this? The percentage really seemed pretty simple.
Yeah, so it's, it's, we're, we're basically levying the exact same amount as the percentages. We basically took the, when we talked to Roads and Streets, we talked about the percentages. So when we levy the 1.5, the county assessor will then say, okay, I need to collect 1.5 from the, from the community of Chino Valley. And so based on where you are, whether you're commercial or residential, then they'll distribute it based on the assessed value. And they do that calculation for us.
So essentially, commercial property is worth more, so you would be paying?
You'll be paying more, yeah. And you're assessed at a higher, you're taxed at a higher percentage than a residential property. Commercial property is taxed at 18% of their primary assessed value. A residential property is 10% of their primary assessed value. So we ask the county assessor to bill all the property owners 1.5 million dollars. And based on how the assessed valuation for all the communities put together, then they distribute, they calculate how much each property pays.
Pretty much it means they've got a mathematical equation to come up with that conclusion.
I know, Joe, would it help to pull up your, your slide, that one page on that slide? I think that shows all the total assessed value.
I, I just hope as, as we keep presenting?
I think the slide's pretty clear. And, because we've had, it seems like we're able to satisfy everybody when we're looking at all the total assessed value with residential and commercial, and it shows all the, how the calculations are done.
Because this is the first that I heard of changing from the percentage to the levy.
Oh, we, we, when you were at the CVID one, we talked about it then.
Oh, look, council meeting, PP presentations.
It's not under there.
No, 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 go to C Drive, May 19, you had it right there, May 19.
No, no, no.
I get it. I, I understand it. But I wanna make sure that this is being presented in a, in a simple, a simple manner.
Keep going. Right there. Yep, those two.
You think this one here? Okay, so this is how, right now in 2018, we have $76,175 in net assessed value. We have 6,901 properties. So when we tell the county assessor that we would like to collect 1,500 dollars from these properties, they go in and distribute it based on these net assessed values. And so the commercial, our 255 commercial, vacant lands, our residential, and the non-primary is things like duplexes and, and other residential type properties. So they'll use their formulas to distribute that ta, that bill to each of these properties. And so the commercial properties are gonna pay a higher assessment rate than the residential properties. Because they're gonna pay at 18% versus 10%. And actually, the neck, the slide back really shows how it works. So you have a, and what I would did on this slide in the presentation, I was really trying to explain the market value and the assessed value. And what we did is we surveyed about 40 homes that have just sold in the last year. So that determined their market value. And then I went out to the county website and looked at their primary assessed value. And it turns out, it came out to just about 50%. Some of your newer homes, like in, let's say Molly Ray, assessed at 50% of their market value. But some of the older homes, like Parkside, their subdivision, they, they assessed at 46%. So the longer you've been on the tax rolls, the less your percentage is probably gonna be. But on average, it came out to just about 50%. So on the residential property, a $200,000 home, it's gonna assess at 100. They're gonna take 10% of that and multiply it by the tax rate to get your $158, which is where option B or 197, which is option, or option A and then option B. A commercial property, that's a half million dollar, that's a half million, will assess about 250,000. We take 18% of that and they'll tax it like that. So the, so the county will back into the amount that they distribute to everybody. Does that answer your question, sir?
Yeah, I still see tax rate option B at 1.97, so.
Right, right. And, and we originally proposed them at 1.5 and, and 2% in the committee. But knowing that the ballot language is gonna have a dollar amount on them, that's why we went to the levy, because that's really what we're doing. So the property, whatever you guys decide when you do the call for election, you're gonna off, you know, you're gonna ask the voters to allow us to levy a specific dollar amount. And so we just, that's why we backed off from the percentages, just to, when we started giving our presentations with them, it was confusing. People didn't understand the percentages. But when we started just saying this flat amounts, they got that. So it just made it easier to convey to the taxpayers.
Is there a chart on the literature? Like specifically, say your home's worth 100,000, 150, 200, 250, what your estimated value, what you, your estimated payment would be? For the public to hand out? That's what I'm asking.
Yeah, well, we've done this one, I believe, in our brochures here. And it's based on a $100,000 home, is what we did for the public. So, and what we're telling people is just look at the market value of your home, take 50% of that, and then multiply it by the, and then, you know, you can multiply it by the 1.97, you'd come up with your rate. And I've actually had people ring, send me some bills in, and I've done the calculations for them. So they can check it, you know, and we had a commercial property and one with a mixed use, which was a little bit complicated, just to see.
And there's a gentleman earlier tonight that said that we wanted to add on to our tax already. Is that language in there? Or that we don't actually have a tax yet?
I don't think the language is in the ballot measure. It's not where it would probably be. But it is in our literature, saying that we have no property tax. And that, that's come up quite a bit in some of our community outreach. They keep going, oh, that's an addition too. And so we have had to explain that. People don't seem to understand that we don't have a property tax.
I explain that all the time.
It's what the people vote for.
That is correct. I do have to explain that a lot.
On the 8th of January, there will be a agenda item on council agenda. And there'll be a call for an election if we so choose to, as a town council.
Have we had any issues on the second part of this, though?
Second part.
As far as the, the water portion of this? And let me see, is that?
So, no, absolutely none. It's all, but that's been very positive. I'd say the only question, what does that have to do with, they're two separate issues? So sometimes they're like, wait, is this paying for that? No. And so we actually started out having them all in one brochure and separated them out because it was confusing to people. They thought they were intermingle.
Well, the questions are, will it, will it affect my well? No, it won't affect your well. We can't deal with anybody's well. All we wanna do is, if we have the opportunity to purchase a water system to, to be managed by the town, that we're able to do that.
I'd say generally speaking, the feedback we've received on the water is, we agree the town should be in the water business. And if you're looking at an opportunity to expand our footprint, yeah, I understand. And I agree.
Thank you.
Any other discussion? Okay.
Thank you.
Let's go on to executive session. Council may vote to recess the regular meeting and hold an executive session, which will not be open to the public for the following purposes. An executive session pursuant to ARS 3843103A4 for discussion or consultation with the town attorney in order to consider its position and instruct the town attorney regarding the town's position regarding a contract concessionaire management agreement with Prescott Sportsman's Club related to the management of Chino Valley Shooting Facility that is a subject of negotiation.
I'll make a motion, we adjourn and reconvene in executive session.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I, I don't, I don't blame you for not opening to the public. It wasn't for any benefit. But I, a council's gonna come down the road and have to widen that access.
You're absolutely right.
We can't do anything. Everybody get sign this.
Yeah, you gotta disconnect with me here and then you can dial my number back again. Do you have the direct line? Okay, yeah. Just dial me directly from in there. And then I made town hall power point the presenter, which is generally the one in that room. Then you just have to share your webcam with me when you get in there. Correct.
Showed me something briefly, but I got so many, I could just thought we got something.
You're right. You're right. How much do I, do I get out of this? But no, it's just the fact that it's their property. They're gonna make something, do something, and it's for their kids. I don't care. It's benefiting someone. And that extra 25 feet, and I think if you were to, right now it's 16, 17.
The world's at.
Yeah, I'm not worried. Okay, everybody sign this? I guess? I did. I posted.
I was supposed to just unshare that.
Thanks.
I'm just trying to get Scott. Is that, is that?
We're trying to get Scott.
I can't take credit for that.
Sorry.
Did we lose the webcam?
Yes, sir. Absolutely. You're not hearing or seeing anything out here?
Sorry?
You're not hearing or seeing anything out here from in there? Okay. It's a little confusing.
Thank you.
I mean, I get it, so I get that. Not gonna be anytime soon. This is cool. I went for one party, right down the street to the. But it's been a pleasure talking with you, getting that info. Have a good day.
Are you swiping this can? I'm borrowing it from Mo. She just doesn't know yet. Oh. I'm having a bongo party.
I'm eating blue lips for my rice.
I have a bongo party for United, my favorite snowman.
Oh, cute.
Why couldn't leave it?
Good night, John.
Just tell her. Mike.
Sure, blame it on him. Boy, I like your shoes. Those are cute.
We're leaving for California tonight. Why would I even say that before the meeting if you're going to France? So this thing is gonna play. That's why I can't ask. I wanna get back.
You're gonna be Russian.
Well, we're coming back late on Thursday. The party she doesn't want? Now you're flying out of Russia?
You're driving?
Yeah. They fly out too late to get there, it's stiff. And you have to be here tonight.
There's somebody standing in the corner because it's a joke. This out, maybe somebody else. You just need to.
And she's gay.
Well, Sarah would say quite once, she's fine with having vegetables. Come on.
She what?
She's fine with having vegetables.
I know. I did that to her when I, I never had. That's why she had.
I, I wondered. No. I've had a couple people say.
She's being a copito. I could use following on there. This is my third term.
That's for years. But you can tell he really enjoys. He just appears to be.
Oh. He does it particularly. Like, you know, when, when they have to go get stuff, he's familiar with. Like those people telling us. Well, they went off to their land, it was raining.
Over.
To look at the park.
On this one, they voted on today.
And that water, where they had started some of their pulmonary giving, the water was running right into his. They had an off white car. I mean, nobody even arrived, my, it was some Chino, it's a whole carpeting. But, you know, no, like. And Chino. Right?
I live in the county.
Oh. Well, same difference.
Off of you.
You know, same difference, we know we have dirt and dust.
But you know what, I have friends that are part of Iris and. They just moved here. They've been last six months. And they really. Cause they may feel. They just.
Oh, I'm sorry. Now, I'm gonna be have to pick up after them. That door is not locked.
No.
Okay. I'm gonna ready for rest.
And I had actually asked those people, I said, you know, why don't you live in the country now, right? Cause I know where they lived in California, it was a, a nice area. I said, yeah, but, you know, we didn't have pay near as much here, and like, it's still a different.
Oh my gosh, I thought, we thought we possessed. So, did, did my house in California?
Yeah.
And on the cane with, we couldn't run angels. The house is twenty-four hundred square feet. And more doors than Cory, you know. It paid up, it's a four hundred. Bank of America, they've been on the market for, you know. Just wanted to unload it.
Well, my house is up, above New York, I said, and we wanted as a hut home, it was repossessed. And we got it so cheap. And it's, it's a modular home, I mean, it's not huge, but it's a little bigger than what we had in California.
That's not a modular home, what space, and you're better than these.
I like it, we really like it. And, I mean, I don't want a huge home, I mean, well, I was retired and now I'm working part-time.
But we actually came up to, well, we did downsize. Our house in California is.
Oh, I couldn't handle that.
We did downsize.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah. But you can put cream carpet in your house.
Oh, I did my bedroom.
Well, in your bedroom, okay, that's all right.
Three years, you did two, nine, ten. Like which, my process at, as a citizen of Chino Valley, one year and one month when he took office.
Oh, really?
Yeah.
Very good, you got involved quick.
I guess the lottery issue.
Ah.
How about the guy that looks at? About two o'clock, and we'll, I'll be at Keith's house.
Now they're all trying to go to somebody else's house.
About two o'clock. Yes, cause you guys work, shut up.
Eight fifteen. My kids need to be in bed in fifteen minutes.
Good night, chief.
Can't shut your mouth, not you, Mike.
I know, I know. Okay. I got paper mat crap.
Okay.
Um, that's what I do.
Kathy said she's ready for us.
Okay.
What was, what I did?
No, we gotta, don't we have to reconvene, we have to make a statement? Mommy told me. He asked me to just excuse us for.
Just one executive session, we, uh, discussed an issue with the, with our attorney, we did not make a decision, and we are ready to.
Adjourn.
I make a motion to adjourn.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, say hi.
Hi.